The zoning board of appeals meeting to order, can we start with a roll call?
James Meyer.
Aziz Essam.
Laura Madrum and Tara Franco. Thank you, can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, alright, we do have one more member who will be coming a little bit late, but we have a quorum and our attorney is not going to be with us this evening either, so you can tell it's summertime. Alright, on the agenda tonight, we have a couple of public hearings. We do have two changes to the agenda in that number one and number five will not be heard or discussed this evening. Number one wasn't advertised to reopen the public hearing and at the request of the applicant, number five is being held over until September. So the first items on our agenda are three public hearings, that's-
Okay, before we go, approval of minutes.
I know, I'll get to, I'm just explaining how to, so there are three items on the agenda that are public hearings, that's an opportunity for the public to comment, and then we do have one review, which is not subject to public comment at this time. Alright, with that said, our next two meetings will be August 28th and September 25th. We have one set of minutes to approve, that had a couple of amendments. Do I have a motion to approve as amended?
As amended, so moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So, with that said, we're gonna go right to item number two, which is appeal 3873 Rugo. Patrick Rugo, 30 Round Hill Road, Hopewell Junction is requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed 30-foot by 40-foot detached garage pursuant to section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening. So, Brian, last month, we had- Oh, sure. We had the opportunity to chat with you about this, actually for the last two months. So you, you have a applicant who's got a lot where he's proposing a 30-foot by 40-foot garage in the back behind his house at the top of a driveway.
Correct.
And he's closer to the neighbor on the right, but it's about, there's a significant distance between the house and this garage, so on the record, can you explain why can't we get it a little bit closer to the house so you can leave some smaller distance? Why can't we cat a corner it, something like that to-
The way that, the lot is, it's long and narrow, so basically what happens is, it's a garage under, so there's actually the perfect area to just pull forward into the garage. The applicant has some screening between his house and the neighbor to the right of the house, and the applicant has agreed to provide additional screening to match the species and type of tree between his house and the neighbor's house. So position-wise, the driveway actually kinda just, actually forces the position of the garage.
Okay, so to support what you've just said, we have a lot that is, on the side, he's looking to put the garage, is almost 500 feet, on the other side, the lot is 523 feet, but the width of the lot is only 144 feet. So, I agree with you that it is a long and narrow lot. The side that he's proposing to put the garage, he has his driveway and his neighbor next door has their driveway. So, again, from a perspective of, that's the function of driveways is, you know, you're gonna have vehicles going in and out of there. It's a long driveway, I think we had this discussion last week, which way was the 30-foot, which was the 40-foot, and what was the proposed use? I think there was some discussion about the owner being a mechanic, but that there was not gonna be any commercial.
Correct, no commercial.
Auto repairs here, it's his own personal-
Personal hobby.
Okay, so, again, 30-foot by 40-foot though, is still a, that's a large garage. I mean, 24 by 24 is a typical kinda garage, so, there's, not at this time. Go ahead. So-
He just, he has a, he's an avid car enthusiast, so he was looking to obviously rectify a situation where there are some cars that are stored on the premise, and this was to get them undercover, and a larger garage would facilitate that.
Okay, so he has, he has other cars on the property now, does he have a garage under his house?
Yes, he does.
He does, okay.
And one of the bays is actually gonna, the reason why the garage is slightly larger is one of the bays is gonna have a lift that he can work on his vehicle, so he'll have that up and down motion, but that will, one bay will be occupied just for like, just for the lift and maintenance of the vehicles.
Okay.
So that's why it is a little bit larger.
Is there a second floor to this?
There's a second floor to it, but it's just for storage only, no habitable space.
No residential space?
Residential space.
Is he heating the garage?
It's not heated.
It's not heated, okay.
Correct?
Oh, sorry, are you the applicant?
Yes, yeah.
You're welcome to join him at any time then, sorry, I thought you were one of the neighbors. So, no, you're welcome to come on up.
Yes, we have multiple cars and our-
Just to the microphone, please, thank you.
Our three-car garage is currently used by three vehicles, I don't use them for storage, so I would like to be able to store other vehicles in the detached garage.
Okay.
We've recently had purses stolen from vehicles, I've had stuff stolen out of my vehicles, and a car was stolen in our neighborhood, it was on the news two weeks ago about, so it's a safety issue as well, I'd like everything indoors, out of sight.
Okay, understood, that makes sense, so, okay. So again, it's two bays?
Two bays, correct.
Two bays, so the 40 feet is the depth, and the 30 feet is the width, so that really sets itself up for just two bays, we're not-
Are you looking to put two cars on the one side, though, what knows the tale?
It's gonna be two cars in front and one car in the back getting worked on, and then shop space for my tools and a lawnmower, just storage to get-
Usual stuff.
Right, to get stuff out of the, out of the lawn.
Okay. So why, last question, why not, like I said earlier, cat a corner?
Part of the other reason is aesthetically, it looks, it's gonna look better sitting straight back.
Okay.
And it'll, in and out, straight in and out.
Okay, have you discussed this with your neighbor, have you?
I have.
Okay, alright, so-
I could provide a letter-
Well, tonight is the public hearing, so I just, you know, it's always when you're putting up-
He's not mad at you.
Yeah, so if you're putting a large structure, it would be nice to know that your neighbor doesn't object, so. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm fine.
Alright, I think I've asked mine. Looks like it'll be a nice sec, let raise back the road in any event.
Okay, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Patrick Rugo, 30 Round Hill Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed 30-foot by 40-foot detached garage? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is appeal number 3873, applicant is Patrick Rugo, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed 30-foot by 40-foot detached garage pursuant to section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance. Property is located at 30 Round Hill Road, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Essam, whereas applicant has applied for the above stated variance, and whereas this action is a type-two action under Secra, and no further action is required, and whereas the zoning board of appeals moves to adopt their standard decision in order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as a garage will be located behind the rear line of the house, and the applicant will plant evergreen in between his and his neighbor's house. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, the variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the above stated variance with the following condition, the story, the second story will be used for storage only.
I think I'd like to just add one more condition, that the automotive repair is only going to be personal and no, no professional or commercial auto repair, okay? So, auto repair will be for personal use only.
I would second the motion with that amendment.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, now you're to deal with the building department, okay, you're all set.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Alright, item number three, appeal 3877 Padavan. Louisa Padavan, 59 West Teconic Road, Wapinders Falls, is requesting a two-foot variance for a six-foot fence which is located in front of the house pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, good evening. So last month, we had the opportunity to talk with you, at that time, you owned multiple lots in the same general area, and I wanna say, you told us back in the 70s, like 47 years ago, that you and your husband put up a fence, a six-foot fence, and you did replace it probably, I think you said, about 10 years ago.
Yes.
And not realizing that the fence, well, 47 years ago, the fence might not have had to have been two feet in from the property line.
Yeah, I have pictures of the old fence.
Okay.
Would you like to see it?
Sure.
Laurie, could you take this?
Thank you.
My daughter was 16 at the time.
Oh, don't give that away.
Wow.
So that's how it was.
She was cute.
And-
She doesn't talk about how old the dog was, but-
Oh, he passed away like 15 years ago. And I did combine the lots.
Okay, yes, so that's what, I understood that since we last met, because there was an issue about a shed being too close to the property line, but since we last met, you've combined all the lots, you did what you had to do to file that paperwork, would you like your picture back? Yeah. Your daughter might wanna picture back.
She's gonna hide it, she's not gonna give it back to you.
So that we don't have to worry about the shed, the shed is not an issue for us. So it is a decorative fence, it's, like you said, it's been there for a long, long time. Your neighbors haven't objected, we understand it was-
Oh, I have a letter from my-
Oh, good.
From that neighbor on the other side of the fence. Mr. Fabbys.
You're doing double duty this evening. Alright, so let me just read this letter into the record, this dated July 7th. To whom it may concern, my name is Robert-
Fabbys.
Fabbys?
F-A-B-Y-S.
Oh, okay, you just said, there's no S on it, okay. I live at 63 West Teconic Road in Wapinders Falls, next door to the Padavan home on the other side of the fence. I have no problem with the height of said fence, we enjoy the privacy. Thank you from Robert Fabbys. So I'm gonna put this in the record, okay, it'll go in the file, so that's good to know that your neighbor doesn't object. I mean, I, we had the opportunity to review this last month, we didn't really have any issues, you gave us all the information that we needed, so unless there are any comments or questions from board members, so-
No, it's pretty straightforward.
For public comments, so if, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Louisa Padavan, 59 West Teconic Road, requesting a two-foot variance for a six-foot fence located in front of the house? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's appeal number 3877, for a two-foot variance for a six-foot fence which is located in the front of the house pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, and whereas the action is a type-two action under Secra, and no further action is required. Whereas the zoning board of appeals moves to adopt their standard decision in order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the fence has been there for many years and was replaced without the required permit approximately 10 years ago. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, the variance requested is not substantial, and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the above stated variance.
Second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries. Your motion carries, you're all, you're all set.
Oh, thank you very much, thank you.
Rick, does she still need to deal with the building department on this, or is she's good? Okay, good, you're all set.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Alright, item number four, appeal 3878, sorry-
I'm just quick, I'm-
It's okay, Malonick.
DD squared, it's unbelievable.
Anton Malonick, owner of 10 First Street, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a two 29-foot frontline variances and an 11-foot front rear, an 11-foot rear line variance in order to replace an 1,100 square foot pre-existing dwelling with a 1,600 square foot dwelling pursuant to section 194-17. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
So we did have the opportunity to talk with you last month about your request. The lot that we're talking about is behind Frankie's, it's a corner lot, which is why you need those two frontline variances. The house is in really, really poor condition, and you certainly recognize that. There are additional structures on there, including a shed and a garage, that have, combined, have a total square footage of approximately 500 square feet.
More or less.
Yeah, more or less, and, but both of those are actually very close to the property lines, much closer than they would be allowed to if you were replacing them today. And so, the viability of putting up another 1,100 square foot house on a corner lot, you've asked us to consider giving you the variances that you need so that you'd be able to take the square footage from the garage, you'll put the garage underneath, so no new owner of the property would need a variance to put up another garage. And so combined, we would look to give you the variance associated with the frontline setback so that you can have a total square footage of the new house of about 1,600 square feet.
Yeah.
You're gonna bring water and sewer-
Correct.
-to this-
I have approval.
All right, so the access is in the neighborhood, and so again, that's gonna make it even better for the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Am I missing anything else, anything else you wanna add?
No, I think I have some support behind me, but other than that.
We'll get to them in a second, is there any other comments or questions from board members?
Nope, I'm good.
So, is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the request from Anton Malonick, owner of 10 First Street, Hopewell Junction, requesting two 29-foot frontline variances and an 11-foot rear line variance in order to replace an 1,100 square foot pre-existing dwelling with a 1,600 square foot dwelling? Do neighbors wanna speak, or no?
Hey, remember saying?
You're good, okay.
Thumbs up?
I got a thumbs up.
There we go.
That works for me.
Works for me.
If you, if you wanna speak, now's the time, that's your speech?
I urge strongly to pres- approve this variance. We've been living with an eyesore for the last 15 years.
Okay.
And I'm sure whatever this gentleman puts up is gonna be a heck of a lot better than what we got right now.
Thank you, we appreciate your taking the time to come out this evening. Can we just get your name for the record?
Pardon?
Can I just get your name for the record?
Who wants your name?
Ed Hoteling.
Okay.
I live diagonally across from this property.
Thank you.
On 3 First Street.
Well, we'll just write it down, so you don't have to worry about standing up, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoteling. Anybody else?
Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, in reference to appeal 3878 by Anton Malonick, in reference to two 29-foot frontline variances and 11-foot rear line variance in order to replace an 1,100 square foot pre-existing dwelling with a 1,600 square foot dwelling pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance located at 10 First Street, Hopewell Junction, New York. Resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variances, and whereas this action is a type-two action under Secra, and no further action is required, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 24th, 2018, and finds the following. This board is very circumspect when it comes to granting variances for new construction on an existing lot. The property which is the subject of this application is located in a part of the Hopewell Junction hamlet that was part of the original Hopewell Village. The lots and homes in this areas are generally different shapes and sizes and lack any general sense of uniformity. This particular parcel contains a very old rundown structure which has been such for more than a decade. The only way to make the removal of the blight affordable and render the lot reusable is to enable the construction of a home whose value will cover the cost of construction and sewer lines to service the property. The board of health will not allow reconstruction as the lot is too small for both water and sewer. Should I have to say septic, actually?
Yeah, that's fine.
Water and septic. This applicant's proposal is to combine the square footage of the existing house, shed, and garage which will be removed into the size of the new home to be built of 1,600 square feet total. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves, under these distinct circumstances, the request by Anton Malonick for two 29-foot frontline variances and 11-foot rear line variance in order to replace the 1,100 square foot pre-existing dwelling with a 1,600 square foot dwelling pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance with the following restriction. The applicant must file a restriction that no freestanding garage or shed will ever be constructed on this property which will run with the land.
Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you, 'cause there's nothing worse than having people come in later, oh, they didn't tell me.
No, it's just too small, I wouldn't do it.
Okay, so do I have a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries.
I wanna thank you very much.
Now you just deal with the building department.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, have a good evening. Alright, item number six, appeal 3879 Roman. Samuel Roman, 3 Furland Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a two-foot height variance for a proposed six-foot fence which would be located in front of the house, and a two-foot setback variance for the section of the fence along the set property line pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so this is a review, this is the first time we're seeing this, this is not a public hearing, not, we've lost our playbook, but- So, so again, this is the first time we're seeing this, we all got your application in the mail. If you don't mind taking us through, we have a survey that came, came, that you had done back, I wanna say, I thought it was 2013, yeah. It was from a couple of years ago. So, why are you looking for this fence, and why can't, can it not be the two feet in from the property line?
Well, basically, the, wanna put the fence up as a privacy fence?
Okay.
Due to some issues with the neighbors, with the neighbor regarding an eyesore.
Okay.
The, where the property line sits, he put a fence up on the property line, and there's, you don't even have the spacing, 'cause in order for the fence to go up, you need, it has to be setback two feet-
He should have put his fence two feet back.
He, there isn't, there isn't enough, there isn't enough space. I'm sorry?
What kind of fence does he have?
He put a four-foot chain link fence, just threw it up with pieces of pipe, pieces of wood, just thrown together.
In the front of his house, or just-
On the side, from the front all the way to the back.
When we talk, when you talk about from the front, is it in front of the frontline of the house?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
It oversees the-
So are you proposing to put your fence then on the other side directly against his fence?
The variance that I'm applying for is basically for the, a small area, if you look on the, on the survey, it's a small area that just meets about two feet for like maybe a four to six-foot span. It's not the entire fence line or anything, 'cause if you look at it, there's plenty of room on, on everywhere else, it's just that one corner.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to come up, because I'm not seeing where on your survey you're asking to do that. So if you don't mind showing us on here, here's Furland Drive, so here's your house, so where are you talking about that?
Right here.
It's in your rear line.
The rear corner of the house, here, on the side.
Yeah, but it's the rear line, you're allowed a six-foot fence in the rear line of the house.
But-
What am I missing?
But the fence line would have to be two feet from the property line, so we don't have it.
But it says you need, you're asking for the two-foot height variance, too.
Well, you're, how far is your house from the property line?
It's about, it is about two feet.
I can't read that measurement, hold on.
Is it running a fence from here, though?
There's a driveway, there's an extended driveway that came here.
Is there a fence along here?
No, I did the dots there just to show, I was told to put the dots here just to show-
You're saying you're gonna lose the corner of your driveway if you're two feet in?
No, no, no.
It looks like it's 16, no, it looks like it's 10.8, if that's 15.4 on this side?
It's 10 feet.
It says 10.8, yeah.
Right, 'cause there's a, unfortunately, the survey company that came out didn't, wasn't able to give me an updated-
Oh, okay, that would probably be helpful, so it does say 10.8, 10 feet eight inches.
Just under.
Where is the fence starting?
11 feet from the property line.
Starting at the rear line?
But it's, it's starting at the rear corner of the house. So he's allowed six-foot fence right up to the front line of the house, so he doesn't need the height variance.
If he's two feet off the property.
If he's two feet off the property, I get that, right, okay.
That's wrong.
That's what the issue, because he wants to be on the property line and not the two feet in, he needs the, okay, got it. Okay. I'm sorry, Rick, what?
Discusses deck, because that's gonna need a variance.
Oh, okay, alright, so you're looking to-
Yeah, but your deck, we need to see it, because I think you're too close, you need to be 15 feet. Has to be 15 feet.
Yeah, we just need you to speak up a little bit so our secretary can get it for the minutes.
That's a picture.
Alright, so Lisa, he's showing us some pictures of, it's literally like a roll of fencing thrown up with some piping put through it.
And he put it up to where, this would be the spacing I'm talking about, is from here to here. That's, you can't even put a lawnmower through, or when you walk, you have to walk sideways for me to get to my backyard.
Okay, so wait a second, you're, the corner of your deck, the corner of this deck is really, really close to that property line. That might be what Rick's talking about.
The very corner.
The very corner.
Yeah.
And you said you removed the steps, though, didn't you?
Because that deck is supposed to be-
Just to avoid any issues with it.
15 feet, given where this property is, okay.
This little spacing here.
That's built up.
He's probably gonna be around 10 or 12 feet.
Alright, let's ask the question, where is that deck in relation to this? Is it going further out in line with the rear?
Comes from here to about here.
To the rear, to the end of the house? It's gonna be a lot closer than the 10 feet, then. So you're gonna need a variance for that deck. We're gonna need a survey that shows that deck on there, because we need to know the distance.
It has been requested, just waiting for the survey company to find the time to come out and get everything done.
So which came, which came first, the fence or your stairs?
The stairs.
That's probably why you threw it up, you didn't want you walking on property.
If you wanna talk, either go to the microphone, sorry, we can't get it on the record, that's all.
Yes, that's-
I guess you're asking him to go back?
I know, I'm asking-
Oh, her, okay.
There were some issues.
Yeah, he probably didn't, thought you were walking onto his property when you came off the stairs, and he got upset by it, and he vandalized it, that's-
What happened was, he accuses us of calling the state on him, and we did not do that, because he has poultry, chickens, rabbits, all kinds of things, it's an eyesore, and-
Okay, what kind of fence do you wanna put up, let's, let's cut to the chase here. Hold on, either go to the microphone, or let him speak.
Honestly, I would like a 20-foot fence.
I, I, I see where you're coming from. That said, what kind of fence are you looking to put up? A solid decorative stockade fence, what do you, okay.
A solid privacy fence, yes.
White, what color, I mean?
Vinyl, wood.
Most likely, I didn't, haven't looked into whether vinyl or wood yet, because I wanted to make, you know-
Okay. Say that again?
Probably vinyl, because you need two feet for maintenance.
Okay, if you're talking about wood, you gotta be able to power wash it every once in a while, stain it, all the rest of it. So then, then the two feet is kind of important, particularly when you have a neighbor who does not want you on his property. 'Cause you're now putting it on his property, and you will not be able to get to the other side unless you're literally leaning over it and- side unless you're literally leaning over it and going down.
Vinyl has two good sides.
Yeah, so...
So you're gonna have to, I guess, price that out.
Right, right. Well, that's what I said, I hadn't really thought of whether it be vinyl, whether it be wood. Although I do know it was definitely gonna be something decorative.
But you're looking for it to be more than just this area, right? Don't you want it to go back a ways?
I would probably do the whole thing, but basically, the variance would be just, necessarily, would just be that area, because that's the only area that...
No, because you're not, you're having it two feet, you're not having it the two feet in the whole way down. So you do actually need it the whole length, okay? But you're not looking for it in front of this corner, correct? Sorry, in front of this corner? You're gonna have it start here, or you're gonna have it start...
It would probably start about here.
Oh, that's what the dots are?
Right, start about here.
So you actually do want it to start in front of the front line of the house?
Well, it would probably ought to match the front line of the house.
If you do that, that's okay.
Because I know, I know I have...
Except for the two feet in.
Oh, yeah.
It would, it would not, it would not exceed the front line of the house.
Where's his house?
His house is about here somewhere.
Even, the key is...
It's on the side.
Okay.
All right, can we have some of these pictures for our file, please?
Absolutely.
I think it's important for us to document this one.
Do we want that, since the stairs are not there anymore, or we mark that?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna...
What happened with the stairs?
I removed them. Completely. I removed them completely.
So how do they even go up and down?
Well, it's from the inside of the house, from, from inside the house.
Okay.
And I just placed a small set of steps on the driveway from...
Oh, so you moved?
Right, so as you can see here, these are a large set.
Yeah.
Now, on this side here, they go right onto the, the blacktop.
That's the driveway here?
Yeah.
Is it a driveway?
Yes.
How tall is that retaining wall? Just curious.
Uh, four feet, four and a half feet.
It's not more than four feet, right?
I would think, well, what size timber are those?
Yeah.
Six by six.
So they're six by six, that's five, they're below four feet.
Thirty feet, thirty inches. Okay, you're good.
What I would suggest is for the next meeting, have the...
Yeah, we're gonna keep this picture.
Newer pictures are...
Yeah, show us, thank you. You show us without the stairs there, if you don't mind. But I'm gonna, I'll keep this picture, so we can...
That's actually the rear.
Well, I, it's important for us to see the fence, to show us why you're... Okay.
Or you can bring it next week, next, next month.
What is this?
That is my drainage from, uh... My...
Gutters?
Drainage from my gutters, that he claims property that isn't his, and he ripped out my drainage from my gutters and threw that fence in. His property actually ends around this area here, straight across. This would be someone else's. He moved, he's, it's...
So, is it a good neighbor?
It's a very challenging...
When the surveyor came out, did they put stakes in the ground?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
But he goes around removing all stakes in the neighborhood.
That is a crime.
He has been seen doing it, and nothing is done. Like, for the vandalism on the steps, he spray painted the steps, literally right after they were put up. Police were called, they saw it, they took photos, they notified their supervisor, and their supervisor said, "No arrest." I can't understand why.
Okay.
That's why we're...
But it is a crime to remove the neighbor's stakes.
The neighbor is in court for other purposes, okay.
That, you should call the police on, that's a crime.
The neighbor is in court for other purposes, including probably some of this stuff.
I have to look at every day.
Oh, no.
This is the issue why we would like, strongly request a privacy fence.
Is that a goat? I mean... What is it? That's one heck of a dog!
I mean, there, there, this is not something frivolous, that it's just, I don't want to look at the guy's house. And that's why we're joking, I mean, to be honest...
No, I hear you, don't worry.
But if I were allowed to, I would put up a 20-foot fence.
Were you taking the pictures with a cellphone?
Yes.
That's, you're blowing up, that's why they're so pixelated.
But what you're looking at is pretty horrible, sorry, that's...
Whatever he can find on the street, that's what he uses.
My God.
And he, and while we're out, we could be sitting out on the deck having coffee, or we have two dogs. He comes out, kind of spray paint, and starts spray painting into the air so that the mist comes up, so we can't even sit on the deck to eat. It's, it's, you don't understand how...
What is, what is that?
Motion to advertise?
No, 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 he didn't have the survey yet.
Oh, okay, all right, we gotta be clear on that.
Okay, so it's pretend.
We need to survey for the deck, because we need to be clear that we're gonna advertise for the deck as well, so...
The fact hasn't been sealed yet.
Understood, that's fine. Let's get the variance first.
Well, four feet's okay, but the design, the type of fence is no good.
Yeah, because I think you have to do it correct.
All right, so I'm gonna ask, can I keep these two pictures to put in the file as well? Thank you.
You can keep as many of these as you want. I'll just print out one.
Yeah, yeah, as long as you bring us...
And I will, I will print out some that's gonna be...
Yeah, without...
Some newer ones without showing that the steps are gone.
Because we'll make it part of the record, to make sure why we are giving the variance. So again, just make sure that you get the next survey. We'll have a review next month.
Okay.
Make sure you have the...
Well, no, if you, if you can, Jeanie, when do we need to advertise for the August?
Twenty days before.
Twenty eighth.
We need to do it by, have a calendar, probably next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, it was August 1st. So that's four weeks in advance, okay. Has the surveyor been out yet?
No.
He hasn't even been out?
They came out, they came out.
Oh, okay.
They came out, and they, they did the restaking.